Good afternoon, I will call to order the April 24th meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. I am joined today by Commissioners Gagnon, Gronzer, Magrino, Slacks, Wheezy, Breland, and Rockwell. Our first item of business is to approve the actions from the April 10th meeting. They have a motion to approve those actions. We have a motion and a second all in favor. And that motion carries. Our next item of business is to approve the agenda. You can find hard copies of the agenda in the hallway. We'll determine which items we will discuss, which will be continued, and which will be considered on consent. So, starting at the top of the agenda, item one is the HCMC Ambulatory Outpatient Specialty Center signage at 801 through 829 Park Avenue, 715 through 721 South 8th Street, and 816 Chicago Avenue. That's a variance related to signs. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item one? See, no one. We'll put that on consent. Item two is at 1721 Como Avenue Southeast, several applications for a new mixed-use building there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item two? See, no one. We'll put item two on consent. Item three is 1,003rd at 1,000 North 3rd Street, several applications for an office building there. We will continue item three to the May 22nd meeting at the request of the applicant. So if there's anyone here for that, we will consider it on May 22nd. Item four is the Kappa Sigma Fraternity at 1,005th Street Southeast, several applications for a fraternity house. There is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item four? See, no one. We'll put item four on consent. Item five is Nordic House at 729 Washington Avenue North, 701 through 729 and 1/2 Washington Avenue North, 722 through 728 North 3rd Street, 8425 and 1/2 8th Avenue North, and 250 and 1/2 7th Avenue North, several applications for an office building and residential and parking structure. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item five? See, no one. We'll put item five on consent. And finally, item six is the Malcolm Yards Comprehensive Plan Amendment at 518 Malcolm Avenue Southeast, 501 Malcolm Avenue Southeast, 445 Malcolm Avenue Southeast, 501 30th Avenue Southeast, 419 29th Avenue Southeast, and 504 29th Avenue Southeast. We will discuss item six. That's a comprehensive plan amendment, so if you are wishing to speak on that, we will discuss that in a moment. So, our agenda as amended is as follows. Items one, two, four, and five will be on consent. We will discuss item six, and item three will be continued to May 22nd. May have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? We have a motion and a second all in favor.
Aye.
And that motion carries. Our next item in business is to consider the Committee of the Whole consent agenda, and Vice President Slack, do you have an update?
Thank you, President Brown. At the April 13, 2017 Committee of the Whole, we reviewed and considered four items. The first is the modifications number three to the consolidated redevelopment tax increment finance district plan. Item number two was a land acquisition at 2822 Emerson Avenue North. Item three was a land acquisition at 3544 34th Avenue South. And item four was a location and design review for the property and evidence warehouse. Based on the presentations, the recommended motion from the planning commission was to approve the staff report that each of those items was consistent with the Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth.
All right. We'll take that as a motion to find those items consistent with the comprehensive plan. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor.
Aye.
And that motion carries. Next, may I have a motion to continue item three to the May 22nd meeting? We have a motion and a second all in favor.
Aye.
And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting. And at this time, I'll open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. Again, that is items one, two, four, and five. Is anyone wishing to speak on items one, two, four, or five? See, no one. I will close the public hearing and may have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Commissioner Rockwell?
I need to recuse myself from item number four.
All right. So noted. Is there any further discussion? Again, we have a motion and a second. All in favor.
Aye.
And that motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. Next, we'll move on to our one item for discussion, item six. I think I did.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Beth Elliott, Paul Mogish will be presenting this item this evening. So, the item before us is the Comprehensive Plan Amendment for the Malcolm Yards area. I'll give a little bit of context for this discussion. So, the map shows the larger semi-southeast Minneapolis industrial employment district, that's in black. The area that we're looking at... Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, that is. So, it's almost 414 acres. The area that we're looking at is the area in red for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. It's at the southern edge of the southeast Minneapolis industrial employment district, as identified in the Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth. So, this is just an aerial of the area. So, what we have here is, on the far south, you can see the University of Minnesota Transit Way, kind of in the left corner. You can see toward the upper part of the photo, you can see the rail yards and the rail corridors. And we also have the solid waste transfer station area here. So, this is a facility that the city uses for our solid waste. And so, we have a lot of trucks coming up and down Malcolm in order to get to that facility. So, the request we have in front of us is to remove nine acres from the semi-industrial employment district as identified in our comprehensive plan. And let me just point out really quickly, you'll hear us talk about the fact that we're undergoing a comprehensive plan update right now per Met Council's requirements. Again, the comprehensive plan that we're working under is our existing comprehensive plan, the Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth, in order to... This is what is proposed to be updated. So, it's nine acres of 21 acres owned by Wall Development. The nine acres is in blue, and this is what's being proposed to be taken out of the industrial employment district. Just south of that, you have University Avenue. I'll show you a little bit more context as well. So, in purple, you have the semi-industrial employment district area. The blue is a representation in our future land use map for basically University of Minnesota properties. The blue represents public and institutional in our future land use map. You can see the stadium for the University of Minnesota. We are also just in the Prospect Park station area as well. And of course, the property that we're talking about is in red in the far corner. Again, this is a little closer. You can see the University of Minnesota Transit Way and the properties that we're talking about that are proposed to be taken out of the industrial employment district. So, here's some more detail on why we're actually... This decision is before us. So, the request again is to take nine acres out of the industrial employment district. That is removing the boundary, so it doesn't include these nine acres, but it's also proposing to change the future land use designation from industrial to transitional industrial to allow more flexibility for... assumingly, to allow more flexibility for future land uses on these nine acres. How comp plan amendments usually happen? There's two ways that they happen. We are in a unique position now because this is a developer-initiated comprehensive plan amendment. We have not seen one of these previously. The way the comprehensive plan usually is amended is it's initiated by the city related to the adoption of a small area plan, or a topical plan, or another policy document that it gets approved through you and the city council. And then, we go through the process of applying to the Metropolitan Council to amend that to our comprehensive plan. That's how it's happened over the last 10 years. This is, again, the first time that there's been a developer-initiated comprehensive plan amendment. There is an application that was created 10 years, like almost 10 years ago with the update to our last comprehensive plan. It just hasn't been used up until this And I just want to point out that a comprehensive plan amendment is not about the development concept. It is about the specific request to change the comprehensive plan. So, it's not about short-term market. It's not about development concept. It's about the long-range vision in this area for whether that should be industrial or something besides industrial. So, right now, the industrial employment district is dedicated to industrial. And so, that's the question before us now. So, it's removing the boundary and also changing that future land use designation. So, it's not about what might happen on this site specifically. That's not the point of discussion today. What it's related to is whether this comp plan amendment is in the future interest of the city. So, Paul's going to mention more specifically about the development itself, or the proposal itself.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Paul Mogish. I'm a planner in the Long Range Planning Division of CPED. Beth talked about some of the site context, what the request is, taking this property out of the industrial employment district and changing the underlying future land use guidance from industrial to transitional industrial. And she also mentioned the important fact that this is the first such request that we've received under this current comprehensive plan that was approved in 2009. So, it's an unfamiliar process to the Commission and frankly, to staff. So, what you're going to see, what you're going to hear from me now is something more than we would normally do for an item that we bring to the Commission related to a specific property or properties. I'm going to go into a little bit more detail about the analysis that we did based on the seven factors for consideration that are in that application for a comprehensive plan amendment that Beth referred to. So, the application asks applicants to make their case according to these seven factors. The applicant has done that in this case, and that's, of course, in your packet in the application that the applicant submitted. And of course, we as staff have done the same thing, conducted an analysis based on those seven factors, and it's in the staff report. At the Committee of the Whole meeting a couple of weeks ago, we went through very broadly what our analysis is in terms of two categories, one being the substantive and one the process concerns that we as staff have. Today, I'm going to go through each of those seven and explain the staff analysis and recommendation. So, the first factor for consideration for a comprehensive plan amendment application is the extent to which the change would be consistent with the comprehensive plan goals and policies. Now, at first read, this might seem a little silly. Well, isn't this an application to change those policies and change what's on the map? Well, this is about considering the request for this property or properties in the context of the whole plan, which covers the entire city and covers a wide range of topics. And the topic that's at hand today is that of industrial lands and how we deal with them in policy and regulation as a city. So, if you go back to the mid-2000s, there was, and we talked about it at the Committee of the Whole, for those of you who were there, this will be a little bit of a repeat, but not everybody was there, so I'm going to go over it again. We were in the midst of a mini-housing boom ahead of the recession. There was a lot of multifamily housing being built in the city, not in the order of what we're seeing today, not that much, but there was a lot happening. And some of that was happening in areas that had traditionally been industrial areas. And there was concern at the time about, well, aren't we going to lose... We're starting to lose land that we need for jobs, and we need to sort that out. The second was, you know, as is always the case, the nature of industrial employment and industrial employment in general was evolving, and we needed to take a step back as a city and take a look at that and how we deal with industrial lands and employment in the city. So, we set on the course of developing that policy through the industrial land use and employment policy plan. That was approved by the city council in 2006, and it set aside these areas for continued job growth into the future, and where housing would not be allowed. And that was carried forward, approved again by the city council in 2009, incorporated those boundaries of the industrial employment districts into the comprehensive plan, future land use map. And you know, all of you know that we in CPED are very prolific in planning. We do a lot of planning. These are the areas in gray where the comprehensive plan has small area plans amended into it. And a lot of those planning processes, those small area plans, geographically overlap with all or a portion of these industrial employment districts. And a lot of those have happened since the adoption of the industrial employment district in 2006 and again in 2009. And in every single one of those cases so far, those boundaries of the industrial employment districts have remained the same. Looking specifically at the semi, the southeast Minneapolis industrial area, which is the subject of this request, this is the boundary that was adopted in the industrial land use plan. Again, reaffirmed in the comprehensive plan. This is just zoomed in closer to the site. And then, one of those small area plans that I mentioned that overlaps with an industrial employment district is the University Avenue Stadium Village Plan adopted by the city council just five years ago in 2012, and it again reaffirmed that boundary. Meanwhile, as Beth said, of course, the larger citywide comprehensive plan update is underway right now, and it is staff's contention that it's important to consider industrial land use policy for the entire city, not just in one area. The goals, policies, and geography associated with industrial lands in general and industrial employment in particular, of course, are part of this update effort and will be the subject and have been the subject of community engagement. So, we've been out, of course, talking with people in the community over the course of the last several months as part of this update. One of the things that we've heard consistently is that there are a lot of people in our city who really need jobs, and they need better jobs, they need better-paying jobs. And it's a priority of this planning process to lay out a policy framework for making that happen. And this ties very closely to the six values that the council has adopted for the comprehensive plan, chief among them equity and racial equity in particular, especially in the face of persistent employment gaps between white people and people of color. Okay. So, number one, the staff analysis is that the proposed change would not be consistent with the existing comprehensive plan goals and policies, and would be premature given the critical conversation and analysis are currently underway regarding employment and employment disparities as part of the citywide comprehensive plan update. The second factor for consideration, evidence demonstrating the reason or reasons that the plan should be changed, including but not limited to whether new information has become available since the comprehensive plan was adopted, that supports reexamination of the plan, or that existing or proposed development offer new opportunities or constraints that were not previously considered. Now, as I said, it's only been five years since the council last reaffirmed the boundary of the semi-industrial employment district through the small area plan, the State and Village Small Area Plan. Now, since that time, just in the last year or so, CPED has commissioned a study of the city's industrial building stock to assess its suitability for key industrial sectors. CPED staff is using this information to inform draft changes to industrial land use policy citywide as part of Minneapolis 2040, the comp plan update process that is currently underway. So, this is among the new information that staff will be using to tee up this question of industrial lands, industrial buildings, industrial employment, citywide. So, we are bringing new information into the larger process. Staff analysis on this consideration is that it is premature to amend the comprehensive plan for a specific property while the citywide comp plan update is underway. The third consideration, whether or not the change is needed to allow reasonable development of the site. Okay. So, I'm going to read from the staff report. Please forgive me, but this is what the staff report says on this. "Reasonable development is allowed under the current land use policy and with the existing zoning classifications for the subject properties. The existing zoning of I-2 is consistent with the policies associated with an industrial employment district, allowing a wide range of industrial uses in addition to office and limited commercial." So, there's essentially saying, there's a bunch of stuff you can do there. Now, this is what we said on the staff report, and we stand by it, but there's more to this. It's clear that looking long-term to, say, 2040, to pick a year, we need to be planning for the industries of the future, or at the very least, the present. So, the way the city's policies and regulations handle industrial uses today may not be exactly right for the long-term future. And we're being pushed, we as staff, we as a department, and we as a city are being pushed to think differently about industrial land uses, and rightly so. This push is coming from a number of directions. So, in your packet, you probably read the MOU between Prospect Park and the property owner. It's all about working toward a more positive future for the area, working together. And a part of that is thinking more creatively about what to do with industrial land. The same thing is true for the Innovation District that the city council approved a couple of years ago for this area. It specifically directs staff to, quote, "consider changes to city policies and practices that allow for experimentation and innovation," unquote. And that's what we're doing right now in the comprehensive plan update, is considering all of those things for the whole city. And I want to be clear about something. This request is to move the boundary of the district and change the underlying future land use. If that were to happen, it would be in the context of the existing comp plan and set of zoning regulations, which doesn't have all this new innovative stuff in it. It doesn't by itself introduce new policy and regulatory tools to use on either side of that boundary. So, that means that for the time being, if it were to happen, we'd be left with whatever the consequences are of moving that boundary under the existing set of policies and tools that we have in the comp plan and the zoning code. So, among other things, that would mean allowing housing closer and closer to the rail yard that Beth was showing, to the SKB Environmental, the solid waste transfer station, and so on. So, it's a long way of saying, the proposed change is not needed to allow reasonable development of the site. The fourth consideration is the relationship with the proposed amendment to the supply and demand for particular land uses within the city and the immediate vicinity of the site. All right. So, here's our city. It is 54 square miles. And in these two shades of purple are the places where the city council has chosen to protect industrial lands for future employment growth. This is about 7% of the city's surface area in total. Actually, these are the areas, rather. So, what we see here is, in the dark purple are the industrial employment districts. In the lighter shade of purple are what's called transitional industrial. They are areas where, at the time that the comp plan was adopted in 2009, existing industrial zoning and land uses existed, but the policy going forward is that they could, they may, transition to something other than industrial. So, this is what we're left with, assuming all of those do transition to something else. This represents 7% of the city's surface area. Now, we're expecting 33,000 new jobs between now and 2040, excuse me, according to Met Council projections. And these are the only areas we have left for industrial employment, or whatever industrial employment becomes in the future. Sure, some job growth will happen downtown, as it should, and in other parts of the city, but there are certain industries that are really only appropriate in these industrial areas that we have set aside. And it's important that we have that full array of possibilities for employment for our residents. So, staff analysis on this factor is that the supply and demand for industrial land uses is a citywide issue that is being addressed in the update to the comp plan, which is currently underway. The proposed change for the subject properties is premature, given the citywide analysis that we're doing. Five, a demonstration that the proposed amendment has merit beyond the interests of the applicant. So, certainly redevelopment of these properties is in the interest of both the city and the applicant, generally speaking. These are underutilized properties that, when redeveloped, will do lots of good things. They'll add activity to the transit station area, employment activity for the transit station area, employment for our residents, and tax base to improve the city's fiscal well-being. It's our contention as staff that this can all occur under the existing policy framework for the industrial employment district and the existing zoning. As I said before, we hope to have new... We will have new innovations in the policies and regulations in the future, but for the time being, these opportunities exist under the current framework. Under the policies of the current comprehensive plan, which has been reaffirmed multiple times, it is not in the city's interest for redevelopment of this plan to be used for uses other than industrial or office. Number six is about the possible impacts of the amendment on a long list of elements that really get to the metropolitan systems that the Metropolitan Council is responsible for under statute. And if we were to submit an application to the Metropolitan Council to amend the comprehensive plan related to this property, there would be some analysis that would need to be done regarding these systems. Now, I do want to say about a couple things about that. Both the subject properties that we're talking about here in the larger semi-industrial area that require substantial investments in transportation and other infrastructure, this is well documented through the many, many plans that have been done in this area over the last couple of decades. And those needs will remain regardless of where that line is on the map. So, these are issues that we as a city know we need to tackle in the years to come. And many of them have been tackled to date. And finally, okay, so the finding is additional analysis might be necessary to assess the possible impacts on metropolitan systems. It's also importantly, it has not yet been determined whether an environmental assessment might be necessary for the Metropolitan Council to consider a comprehensive plan amendment. And finally, consideration of the impact of the proposed amendment upon current and future special assessments and utility area charges, future property tax assessment, or other fiscal impacts on the city of Minneapolis. This is not an argument that we are hanging our hat on. Staff is not aware of any adverse impacts related to those considerations. So, in closing, just to bring it back to the two, boil it down to the two concerns that we as staff have about this request. One is the substantive, preserving land for industrial development, or for industrial employment, however imperfectly defined today in the comp plan, is critical to meeting the employment needs of our residents over the long term. And two, the process concern, the issue of industrial employment really needs to be considered at the citywide level, and it is through the comp plan update process that is currently underway. So, I will leave it at that, and Beth and I will be happy to answer any questions from the Commission.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Rockwell, then Commissioner Wheezy?
Two quick questions. One is, what was the last time this area was last used for active industrial, and what were those uses? Why did those end? And then, what policies do... Well, not what policies. What other tools is the city using to try to encourage industrial employment here? So, we've got this zoning district, but do we have money on the table? Do we have... What else is going on?
Commissioner Rockwell, for the second question, I'll ask David Frank, the Economic Development Director, to come forward if you wouldn't mind. The first question regarding the history of the site, David might have some insights into that. I'm sure that will be talked about when the applicant comes forward. It might be a good time to ask that.
Commissioners, Commissioner Rockwell, as I understand your question, it's, what is the city doing to help in this area right now?
Right. I mean, yeah, the basis of my question is wondering if we're putting a stringent land use regulation on the site, what are we doing to help people meet the requirements of that land use besides just putting an overlay down? meet the requirements of that land use besides just putting an overlay down?
Understood, thank you. So for starters, I will say, this, we believe this is a very attractive area for development. I see some colleagues in the audience, I'm sure, will testify that the public has invested a great deal of money in the form of the light rail system. It has a tremendous location near both downtown Minneapolis, downtown St. Paul. It's in the middle, it's surrounded by attractive neighborhoods. So there's infrastructure investment. We're about to make additional infrastructure investments south of the transitway. North of the transitway has been a much more hands-off. We've, we've worked with businesses who want to locate in the area. We have worked with this developer somewhat, and other developers too, to help them locate businesses there and locate employment there, but we do not, if this is your question, we do not have a specific financing program that says if you develop this site in this location only, we have this, this program for you. The council, as was mentioned, passed an Innovation District Resolution, recognizing this is the city's first Innovation District, so, you know, our door is open to think about creative things to do, and we're always trying to find creative things to do. But I hope that's generally responsive to your question.
Sure, thank you.
Commissioner Sweets.
Yeah, I'm wondering, the, this method of amending the comprehensive plan, why was it created, that creates an avenue for a private party to come in?
Commissioner Sweets, that's a good question. At the time that we were updating the comprehensive plan last time, leading up to the 2009 adoption of Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth, one of the new features of that comprehensive plan that we are operating under now, it is a parcel-specific future land use map, where every parcel in the city has a future land use designation. That was not the case in the plan that preceded that. And, and the, a second important difference is that there were more boundaries drawn, or policy boundaries drawn, like the industrial employment districts, whereas in that example, before the industrial employment districts, there were dots on the map that said, you know, generally where we want industrial jobs, but that where there weren't specific boundaries. So we felt it was important to at least offer that opportunity for applicants to propose changing those boundaries and changing those parcel-specific designations.
Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Some of my questions were answered. I guess one I would like to ask is more about the infrastructure investment in this area. So, so I guess I, just kind of the bigger picture of my questions. We're in the middle of the comp plan process that will be adopted in 2018, and then if we anticipated change in the comp plan, then, so the, so you're, so you're suggesting the earliest that something like this would be able to go forward would be like past 2018, so like maybe more like 19 or 20? So I just wanted to check, like, what was the timeline where you thought if we didn't make this change, it would be reasonable to consider this? And then the second question was more about the infrastructure, and what's the intention for infrastructure here? I understand that the lack of roads is a challenge, not just for new development, but even for the site as it is today.
Commissioner Bender, on, on the first question, if I'm understanding the question right, I think my response would be that, as far as the timing is concerned, there's, there's two, I think, potential avenues as it relates to this property owner and applicant. One possible outcome is that the changes and innovations to industrial land use and employment policy that come out of the comp plan might achieve what they want to do here, and they can just do, do what, do that after the plan is adopted. If it doesn't, then at least we have had the citywide conversation and, and set the citywide policy, so we know what could be amended in the future. But you're right, the timing is such that it, you know, that we'll be submitting the plan to the council, to the Metropolitan Council at the end of 2018, then they do their review, and then it comes back to the Minneapolis City Council for another approval, so that that is into 2019. I'm sorry, remind me what, oh, infrastructure was the other, was the other question. Can you, can you state what the question is again, Commissioner?
So my understanding, from talking to the council office about this, was that one of the challenges of using the site today is the lack of roadway connections through the site and even up into the rest of the land area, the 900 acres. So I was interested in the infrastructure plans, you know, currently, if we expected to stay industrial, or, you know, in this new project.
Right, okay, thank you. Commissioner Bender, the, you know, the, the, there were a couple of key infrastructure, as far as the street network is concerned, key infrastructure recommendations that have been in many plans. One is the Granary Road connection between 280 and 35W, which is about primarily, as I understand it, about truck movement and connectivity through the area. The, the other is the so-called missing link of the Grand Rounds and getting a bridge over the rail yard to complete that. And then there are smaller connections that need to be made for internal circulation, regardless of what the land uses are, you know, and there, there's an ongoing debate about, do you cross the transitway with the street or that street? But tho- those issues remain regardless of what the land uses are. And I should say too, that part of that, the pieces of that network have been completed in recent, in recent years. Malcolm Avenue, north of the transitway, if you're driving or walking or biking to Surly, you've been on the new Malcolm Avenue. I think 25th is another one that's been done recently, so these are all in process.
Commissioner Kronzer.
Hey, thanks, Paul. Can you outline where the limit of the freight railroad ownership is, just north of the
Commissioner Kronzer, freight rail ownership, that question? I believe it's a combination of BN and Canadian Pacific.
Do you know the location of the property line?
I'm sorry?
How close, how far south does that ownership come?
It's a little tricky, Commissioner Kronzer, there, I mean, you can see visually in the gray, in the photo that's up, you can see that, that line, you know, behind the, the white-roofed industrial building there. That's the boundary of the rail yard, the functioning rail yard, but there are, you know, there's a spur line south of that. There are all sorts of, actually, there are, there's more than one spur line south of that, and there are all sorts of remnant railroad parcels interspersed throughout this entire area that make it very complex to do the infrastructure projects that we were just talking about.
Sure. What about the container storage just north of Surly? Is that freight rail owned, or is that privately held?
I don't know the answer to that. Does, David, you know? The applicant.
Okay, let's move on. How about the limit of the, the Innovation District? Does that have an actual boundary, or is that more of a?
It does have a specific boundary, and it's the larger, it's actually, it's in, it's in the packet. It was included in the applicant, the applicant's materials following the resolution. I could throw it up on the screen.
Oh, it's black and white, and it doesn't read very well.
This is the boundary of the Prospect North Innovation District, so it includes a good chunk of the semi-employment district and, and other land as well.
Okay, next question. The economic competitive study that was presented here, you had a slide on that. It looked like it had dots on existing buildings. It was quite small. Are there any of those buildings in this, either in this area or within the proposal in front of us?
So Commissioner Kronzer, you know, the intent of, of showing this slide was simply to say that this is important information, among other information, that staff are using in the development of draft policies for the comprehensive plan, acknowledging that, that existing industrial policy does need a, a refresh. I can't tell you, by looking at it at this level, whether any of those dots are, are in this immediate vicinity or not. What's clear is that the property that we're talking about, with the exception of the Harris Machinery Building, doesn't have buildings on it.
Yeah, speaking of existing buildings, my understanding is there is an existing building that's proposed to be reused in this area that is independent of this action tonight, or is recommendation tonight. Is that true?
Commissioner Kronzer, I'm assuming that you're referring to the Harris Machinery Building and the applicant's materials, there's a statement that the intent of the applicant is to renovate that building and, into a food hall, which would be allowed under the current policy.
Commissioner Slack, and then Commissioner Lupe here.
I just had a follow-up question to Mr. Frank, and I think this is coming from the, from the first question asked by Commissioner Rockwell, but do, do we do active marketing for our industrial lands? I, I sort of heard that it's, it's sort of a, when somebody inquires, we respond and work with them, but are we actively out there marketing? And would that be something that we'd want to consider as part of this comprehensive plan update, a, a policy around active marketing? Because I think one of the things that really stood out at the Cal meeting, when we heard a presentation on this, was how long the landowner's been sitting on this land, how nothing has happened, how there seems to be no activity being generated whatsoever. And so I, I don't know if that question is close enough to, to the response you gave to him, but I'm wondering if, if you could answer that.
Of course, Commissioner. Let's see, so whether it belongs in the comp plan or not, I will leave to others with more thought, who are able to give better thought than I am to that. I will say that, yes, it is part, we consider it part of our job, that when we have, let's call it a prospect, a company who is looking for a location, looking to expand, thinking about moving to Minneapolis in the first place, that yes, we do try to market the places in town. We're a little bit agnostic usually about where in town, as long as it could work, where they should consider locating. And so, yes, we consider that part of our job. As the developer will tell you, you know, they're in, they would have been interested in, might still be interested in any lead that we or a broker could bring their way, and they have not, they have not had that good fortune to date. So yes, we consider it part of our job, whether it belongs in the comp plan or not.
Okay, I'm starting to get a little bit outside of the, of, but is, is there a venue where, you know, all the industrial land users, the people who want to develop industrial lands come together somewhere nationally, and are we there, you know, promoting, selling, marketing our available lands?
Great question. So when you say, the part of the problem is when you say "our." I mean, yes, yes, there are, there are trade associations, there are real estate broker get-togethers, there are marketing tours, there are all of those. We are involved, we, the city ourselves, are involved sometimes to market our own property. We do own a very, very small number of industrial properties, and we do market those sometimes through those venues and in those methods. We don't usually, sometimes we do participate in broker events to market private property for understandable reasons.
Right, Commissioner Lupe here.
Yeah, I have a question for Paul. This seems, this is a new process, obviously, but what are the, I'm comparing this process to a rezoning application, and I'm wondering if you have any insight into why this is the route that's being gone versus a rezoning. Is there something that's achieved that can't be achieved through rezoning? I mean, is there, is there some, it seems like there's a lot of overlap between the current zoning versus what the comp plan amendment would be, so I'm, I'm just kind of wondering why.
Commissioner Lupe here, one of the brighter lines in the, in the current comprehensive plan is that policy that says, on one side of this purple line, you can only do, and, you know, employment-related uses with some ancillary, commercial uses in office, and not housing. And on the other side of that line, you can do housing. And that, that's, that's presumably, and it'd be a good question for the applicant, presumably one of the primary drivers behind this request. If, if the applicant were to come forward with simply a rezoning request to a different zoning district, whether it be to add the industrial living overlay district, or change it to a mixed-use or residential district away from industrial, that would be an almost certain no in terms of the staff recommendation, because it would be very clearly inconsistent with the comprehensive plan.
Then two more questions. One is, so essentially, we're being asked to weigh whether, in theory, the future best interest of this land is still industrial employment, or whether it's for housing, and whether there's a need for housing in that area, essentially.
You, you know, I don't want to speak, Commissioner Lupe here, I don't want to speak too far, or too much for the applicant in terms of what the applicant's intents are, but it is certainly one of the outcomes of moving that line would be that housing would be allowed.
Okay, and then my last question is, a lot of the factors, of the seven factors, I think like five of them, the staff finding really, really related a lot to it being too premature, given the fact that you're currently planning for an upcoming comp plan update. And I'm just wondering, since this is the first comp plan, really, that, that exception has even been in, that someone outside the city can apply to amend it, was there any thought given to having a sunset very rare after year, whatever, it's, you can't use it? Because it seems to me like, either they can use it or they can't, but it's a new tool, so we're all learning, and there's some growing pains, but at what point is that threshold crossed where really applying doesn't make any sense, because we're planning for the next one? Is, is that at all discussed or defined for the next?
Commissioner Lupe, Commissioner Lupe here, so the, the Met Council does have a hard line in terms of the calendar, when they will no longer accept applications from cities for comprehensive plan amendments, which is what we would be doing in, in the case that the Planning Commission and the council asked us to move this forward. That, I believe it's June of next year, which is probably a different question from when just process-wise, and good, good process-wise, does it, does it make sense to stop doing that? I don't think we have a, an answer for that.
All right, Commissioner Rockwell.
I, I had, I think a related question to Commissioner Lupe here, which, you know, the, the timing, was related to the timing and to, and to the relation between the current comp plan and the next comprehensive plan. So I guess my question is, why, why don't we have, I, when I look at the current comprehensive plan, I see, it can be read a number of different ways, right? We've got a couple of different ways in the staff report here, because we have direction around economic development, we have direction around transit areas, climate initiatives, so on and so forth. We did see fit, under the current comp plan, to designate this an Innovation District, right? And so what is the, so what, what I hear you saying, staff saying, in the process worry is that we are, we would be premature to put in place regulations that could effectively regulate this land toward our future goals, and yet we, and so I guess my question is, why can't we put regulations in underneath the current comprehensive plan, which I think this commission has seen has a lot of flexibility to be interpreted in a number of different ways? And, and, you know, we've seen instances where, for example, we put the pedestrian overlay, we, the city, put the pedestrian overlay district over the wedge area, because we saw development occurring there that, that didn't feel right, and so forth. So I'm not sure if that's a super clear question, but I think we did.
I got it, yeah, so Commissioner Rockwell, certainly the commission does and could, you know, take action to, to amend current policy, to introduce new zoning tools, and has and will continue to do that. The request before you right now is simply about these properties and moving the line and the underlying land use guidance, and, and wouldn't change any of that. It would, you know, the existing policies and, and zoning map and text would, would continue to apply.
All right, and Commissioner Magrino, and then we should probably open the public hearing on this, before we get too much further along.
Yeah, just a, I think a pretty basic one. I did miss committee the whole couple of weeks ago, so this is a very interesting conversation, and I'm enjoying having it. I think I saw on the zoning and planning agenda a couple months ago, a small area plan, I think it was for Logan Park, that we didn't exactly adopt. We sort of just received it and, I think, filed it. I'm not exactly sure what the terminology is. So have we already got to the point where we're not adopting small area plans that the city initiated? And if so, I guess, could you talk a little bit about that? It seems like maybe it already did sort of cut off.
Yes, Commissioner Magrino, we are at that point, and that was the rationale behind that recommendation, related to the Logan Park plan, was that the focus now is on the comprehensive plan.
And there just, was the one neighborhood small area plan?
Right.
Okay.
All right, and we'll, we'll have an opportunity to ask more questions in a minute, but at this time, I'll open the public hearing on this item, and I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first, and just so I have a sense, how many of you are here to speak on this item, or how many of you? of you would speak? Several people. So we'll have the applicant speak first. Paul?
If you will indulge me for a minute, Jack is reminding me that that action the Commissioner Magrino was talking about, it actually was related to two small area plans, not just one. Correct that for the record.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Commissioners, for hearing our case. My name is Jeff Barnhart, and I'm with Prospect Park Properties. I'm partnered with John Wall. Wall Company is an applicant on this site. I can finally say that this isn't my first rodeo, and I think you should note that, because all the other rodeos have taken place literally right across the street. I can throw a baseball from all the other projects I've brought before you guys, and I can land it on this site if the wind's with me. I'll say it again, I always say it, I will never come before the city of Minneapolis with a project unless I have full neighborhood support, and this project is no different. I've engaged with the community more this time and other affected stakeholders more than any of the other projects I've brought before than on this one. In the, in the past three years, on fewer than 10 acres, I've facilitated four developments that are in varying stages of the development process that will create more than 200 jobs, hotel, grocery store, apartments, senior living, and affordable housing, all while helping to fulfill other stakeholders' aspirations, like the Green Forest Street, which is the green space artery running adjacent to all the above-mentioned, District Stormwater and a park. Both the District Stormwater and the park are on property, the Prospect Park Property owns and is helping give it for the public good. You see, I'm a lucky guy. I'm standing here today, this is probably my fifth or sixth project, and I have the opportunity to be around a community and partners with a real vision. This is a legacy project, and believe it or not, even at my age, I've gotten wind of that, and I'm, I'm taking that for what it is and trying to do something amazing. I've dedicated my life to this area after graduating, graduated from the U of M in 2008. I know this area as well or better than anybody. I know where the pipes in the ground are, I know the ownership of almost every piece of land, and by the way, I can answer all your guys' questions that they couldn't answer. And I know the number of units and offices in all the nearby buildings. I know the neighbors by the first name, and of course, I know the zoning. I've also read all, all those reports that were cited in the, in the staff report inside and out, and I'm the one who convinced John Wall that this was a good idea, so if it all flops, you can blame me. Why? Because this area needs a core and infrastructure to attract all the industry and other uses we all want to see here. You see, the Prospect Park neighborhood is south of University Avenue with a thin block of commercial separating the single-family homes from University Avenue. University is the only east-to-west artery split down the center by the LRT green line. As good as the LRT is, it's not very conducive for pedestrian travel back and forth north-south. On the north side of University Avenue, you've got maybe two blocks of more commercial to the north of Hodge Podge Collection of single-family homes, office buildings, and then the four-block area that I was talking about above that I'm helping develop, all surrounding the 29th Avenue Light Rail Station. Then there is the U of M Transit Way. I call that no man's land. The grass isn't greener on that side, the grass doesn't even grow because it's been neglected for so long. There's, there's no infrastructure, there's nothing there, and even the road that is there, Malcolm Avenue, is full of trucks and the utilities are tapped. I'm trying to work on another project, and there's not even capacity to put storm in that street, so the infrastructure is pretty, pretty seriously missing here. So we need a core, and we need the infrastructure, and we're in the process of creating that, but we need your help. The other side that is under development is good, but we need more, and we're asking for nine of our 21 acres to allow for some housing so we can, or, or just some more flexible zoning use, so we can go after the market and be able to afford the green space, the repurposing of the Harris Building that was built in 1886 that we're trying to turn into a food hall, and to leverage the infrastructure with the roads. Again, there are no roads leading to the site. Many of us have worked tirelessly for several years facilitating the development in this area. The timing is perfect right now. Three of the projects that I mentioned are either under construction or will be in construction by the fall. Green Forest Street is going to be, being built this summer. We've already gotten District Stormwater Phase One in, and MWMO has already completed a feasibility study for the Stormwater on Phase Two, which would be on this Malcolm Yard site. Hennepin County, the council of the state, Towerside, Blue Cross School Shield, the neighborhood organization, and MWMO have all given resources to this core area as well as their private investment. And so here's why I'm frustrated. All that sounds great, but here's the frustration, is that staff report is, is pretty brutal. And, and at the community of the home meeting, it's actually softer today than, than it was there, but I felt like I was guilty trying to prove innocence. We got a good plan with a lot of merit here, and, and that wasn't really even accounted for. They don't consider the past efforts to attract those uses, they don't consider how the light rail has changed the landscape, and they really, it's not considering the new type of industry and how industry has changed. Our plan considers way more cities' goals, and it contradicts, has a public realm component, sustainability, density for sure, walkability, and repurposing old historical, historically significant buildings, all while leveraging the infrastructure with our current plan. Other cities and neighborhoods would be jealous if they saw the amount of community engagement us developers are doing with this neighborhood. And here's the best part, after that Cal meeting, I did a little research, and if you look on that map, you got SKB just left the Malcolm to the north prior to the railroad yard, and then those private cargo containers are on another nine acres that is private property. On 17 acres right there, guess how many jobs there are? I called the owners. Guess how many? 18. 18 jobs on 17 acres, that's 1.0588 jobs per acre. I'm 20Xing that, and I'm not even trying to on the south side of University. So if you be my guest and help us change this usage here, and we can finish creating a core and leveraging the infrastructure, I bet you I can get a 50X on that, and we're preserving, we want industry, we want to surround the core with the industry. So just with that, thank you, and Carol Lansing will now give some findings that support our ask, and if you guys have any questions, I think I'm the man to ask, so.
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant right now? Doesn't look like any at the moment, so we can move on to Carol.
Good evening, Commissioners. We are asking you to recommend to the city council that one aspect of the city's land use policy be amended, applicable to this nine-plus-acre site. We are not asking to change the IED policies or goals themselves. The application simply seeks to remove 9.4 acres, not even all of Mr. Wall's property, from an over 400-acre semi-industrial employment district, and to re-guide that 9.4 acres to transitional industrial. Future rezoning decisions and other applications for development in this area will continue to be guided by the many current comprehensive plan policies that have been already noted here tonight, including those related to transit station areas, the university growth center, sustainability, historic preservation, importantly, parks and open space, and also it will advance those very specific goals and plans for reconnection or creation of a street grid that connects the area south of the Transit Way into the north. As has been discussed, the Met Council does not feel that comprehensive plan amendments need to be cut off until June of 2018. We don't feel this is premature for the reasons also that Jeff noted in terms of the momentum of development and opportunities in this area. Removing a small area from the edge of the semi-industrial employment district will not impede staffs or the commissions or the city council's ability to do a reanalysis and a continuing analysis of citywide industrial land use policy as part of the 2040 comprehensive plan update. Moreover, we believe strongly that allowing mixed-use development that includes housing on both sides of the Transit Way, not the entire semi-area, but just some area to the north of the Transit Way, will actually serve to catalyze the development that is being sought, and that is the core goal of the employment district with higher-density employment uses. One comment about the review factors that Paul went through with you. These are factors for consideration, they are not required findings, so it's similar to a rezoning, they're things for you to consider, and you're not limited to those considerations. This is a policy choice for the city to make, and the city council has almost unfettered discretion in what it chooses to do. I would say the fetters on its discretion would be those that are constitutional in nature. A little bit more on the planning history for the semi-area, which began decades ago. The first plan that we are, that's noted in our application materials and referred to as the semi-area master plan, this was adopted in 2001. As part of that plan, in this wider semi-area, they identified three areas for potential redevelopment. They called one the south redevelopment area, and that includes the area from the rail yards to university and even some south of university, a central and a north redevelopment area. And the area we're talking about for amendment is in this south redevelopment area. As part of that semi-plan, it had a much broader, and I know you can't read this, so I will read it to you, it had a much broader vision for the mix of uses that should be allowed to promote the semi, and it was still southeast Minneapolis industrial area. So even in that acknowledgement of this as an industrial area, they stated that "the general character in land use should change from one dominated by manufacturing and industry to one of balanced mixed uses, light industrial, office, research, medium to high-density residential, and limited retail service and uses." And that guidance was for land on both sides of the Transit Way. The next was the industrial land use study, and that was adopted in 2006 and formalized policies for those IED areas and boundaries. The one note I want to make about that policy is that it did not identify the location of or discuss the relevance of existing or planned light rail transit stations to its policy. So where it was near a future light rail transit station, it did not account for whether that, you know, how that should impact, whether the boundary should be where it is or what uses should be allowed near there. The IED boundaries were then adopted into the comprehensive plan, and what I wanted to note for you is that when it was adopted, when these future land use maps were adopted in 2009, this is the IED boundary for semi, this purple line, that's the Transit Way. But even at that time, because of the ongoing relevance of the southeast Minneapolis semi-master plan, this area where the amendment is being proposed was guided mixed use. That was not changed until adoption of the Stadium Village Plan, at which point, a small area plan, at which point staff and the plan says the change is considered a clarification, but I also want to point out with respect to the Stadium Village Plan, it states specifically that it just affirms previously adopted policy in the semi-master plan and other documents. It did not study the semi-area. So it did not evaluate or reevaluate the guidance for that, that area. Most recently, the Innovation District policy was adopted by the city council, and Paul did show you the map for this area. It is the south semi-area, but substantial areas of land south of university. It is not simply an industrial policy. You should not be confused with the name Innovation District with some, the word Minnesota Innovation Park or Minneapolis Innovation Park that had been used in the past to promote the idea of a research and development area in semi. They're different innovations. The Prospect Park community's planning engagement was central to the adoption of this city council policy, this first Innovation District now known as Towerside, and their engagement has not ended with either the small area plan or the adoption of this Innovation District. There are others here to speak in more detail to that community engagement and what the Innovation District is all about. I just wanted to point out two of the resolutions, two of the points in the resolution, and that was that the city council directed CPED to continue to participate in planning around this Innovation District area. I don't think they put a limit that said, except when you're doing the comprehensive plan update, which takes several years. And they also said, as has been noted, that the city should consider changes in city policies and practices to promote experimentation and innovation consistent with city goals. And our position is that what we are proposing is consistent with many city goals and with just that boundary change. As was explained, you haven't seen comprehensive plan amendment applications before, because in general, the comprehensive plan is very flexible, but with respect to the IED, it is not. It is rigid with respect to housing. Other plans and policies that apply to this site that we've gone through contemplate a wider variety of uses, and the most recent policy statement by the city in the Innovation District actually encourages reevaluation of existing policies and regulatory flexibility. So we hope that you agree that what we are proposing as a minor amendment to an IED boundary is consistent with those policies and that you will rec-amend approval. Thank you.
Speakers, and you can, yeah, please, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, President Brown, members of the commission. My name is John Wall. I'm the property owner for most of this property, and I just want to kind of relay a piece of this puzzle, which is, I've been trying like crazy to bring industrial jobs to this area. In 1998, I hired a gentleman named Jim Hall, who has since passed away, but really brought this idea to me and to our company. We started buying up property in this area, in large part because he was familiar with a movement between the university and the city of Minneapolis to redevelop this into a science park. We approached the university, got their support, their encouragement to pursue this idea. We joined the Association of University Research Parks. Who knew there was such a thing? But anyway, joined, traveled the annual conventions all over the country, and participated in their training. We worked with the city of Minneapolis for redevelopment of Malcolm Avenue. You may recall, may not, that it was a dirt path when we bought the property, and for the better part of the first 10 years we owned it, there was no pavement on Malcolm Avenue. I hired a full-time employee to work simply on bringing customers or tenants to us for this Minnesota Innovation Park, which we called it. I worked with three university presidents and two university vice presidents of research. I worked with PERIA, now Prospect Park Association. We helped create the state's only biozone to bring industrial and research jobs to this area. We partnered with Min, with MinBio and Life Science Alley to promote this idea. We worked with the city on building, trying to build the Granary Road project. We hired a brokerage company to help us market the property to bring jobs. We pitched Job Z, which was brought to us by, Project Z, which was brought to us by Greater MSP, which was a national biotech headquarters. We pitched Be the Match to be on this site, but frankly, I thought it would have been a better spot for them than where they are now. We pitched Fairview, Central Labs, and a host of other companies we tried to bring to this site. I've resisted, for the most part, the urge to accommodate people that want to do outside storage for truck trailers. Then our most popular phone call is people wanting to store stuff outdoors. We've done numerous master plans, we have finally now negotiated a memorandum of understanding with the neighborhood to support the vision we have for the site. We've helped promote the state's first Innovation District, Towerside, which is passed by the city. And now, we're, we're courting some users that are interested, but they need the infrastructure to get them in. This plan will still pursue, I want to be clear, we still have this, have the dream, I still have the dream of bringing research-type people to this area. We're right next to the University of Minnesota. And so far, we haven't had a lot of enthusiasm or support from the university, but that's really, in order to get them here, I need a little help to get across the Transit Way. We need to make a place that's significant, and I think this plan we have now does just that. We're creating some park space. You mentioned the food hall, very excited about the food hall. My wife's involved in that, and it's going to be a wonderful place-making piece. We do need the infrastructure, and we believe that this plan will bring more jobs and more taxes than just industrial alone. Please don't waste this opportunity to bring these jobs and the tax base to our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
I stand for questions if there are any.
Doesn't look like there are any questions at the moment. Thank you. And we can move on to some other speakers. So yes, please state your name and address for the record.
All right. Thank you very much, Chair Brown and members of the commission. My name is Richard Gillyard, I live at 194 Malcolm, Avenue Southeast. I've been a member of the Prospect Board of Directors for at least a decade. I've been the chair of the Master Planning Committee, and one of the principals in the Prospect Park 2020 Community Development Corporation, and one of the founders of the Prospect North, now Towerside Partnership. Appreciate this opportunity to talk about our vision for this district and to support Appreciate this opportunity to talk about our vision for this district and to support the change in zoning, the change of the designation of the identified parcels from industrial to transitional industrial. I'm here to underscore today the overwhelming community support that has been developed for this specific proposal and what the wall companies are proposing. And just as important, how this parcel and the proposed uses fit within the endorsed vision for the Towerside Innovation District and will, if approved, provide the energy, the momentum to drive the redevelopment that this asset-rich location deserves. Although this area has been much studied over the past several decades, reports, the stack of reports is thick. We, as a neighborhood, believe that the coming of the Green Line would trigger a flood of development. The university and the underdeveloped property that many have described would be the magnet. Our fear was that it would be a stretched version of Stadium Village along University Avenue, and perhaps it would be the science park that John has described. It's just as likely it would become the light industrial, one-story warehouses that were possible. It was our view that the existing plans failed to fully recognize and fell short of capturing the enormous potential of this one-of-a-kind location. A location next to the country's, the nation's largest research, public research institution, crossroads of the freeways, on the Green Line between the two cities, you've heard all of that. It's an extraordinary site, and it was our determination that it was urgent to develop a crystallized vision that would fully encompass the entire district, stretching east from the stadium to Highway 280. It was our goal to reimagine this geography in terms of what's happening in industry, who we are, how we live, the types of jobs that are being created today, where work takes place, the impact of technology transfer, communication, transportation, and how employment figures in the lifestyle of city residents. We agreed with the long-held designation of this district as a terrific site for job creation, but it was clear to us that it had the potential to be much, much more. Over the course of years, over the course of two years of mind-bending meetings with the community, we determined that this place could be a rich, high-intensity assemblage of places and spaces for living, learning, discovery, as well as the arts and culture, as arts and culture. We determined it could create, provide a catalytic environment with the potential for 2,500 to 3,000 new residential units, for workforce, affordable, special needs, senior, artists, a broad spectrum serving all levels of ability and resources. Our research determined that it could provide or could accommodate several hundred thousand square feet of learning, commercial, specialty offices and studios, and could provide space for 5,000 to 6,000 new jobs, all knit together by a connecting public realm. And just as important, we envisioned that this place could be a replicable model of a sustainable, regenerative development, a community that is diverse, inviting, healthy, and beautiful. And today, through the imagination of the community, the hard work of the landowners and developers, the cooperation and support of the city, Hannibal County, the Mississippi Watershed Management Organization, the University of Metcalf, and the funding of McKnight, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and others, this vision is being realized. Green Fourth Street is being built. The vision for that street is attracting a wide range of housing types. A signature two-acre park has been identified, running from the stationery across the old Bezier sheet metal site to the base of the United Crusher's elevators. This park needs eyes on the park. A district stormwater system is in place, and a district energy system is being planned. And dare I say, there is on the boards what we believe a workable plan for the mythical Granary Corridor, as well as the long-sought link for the Grand Rounds. The staff report calls for additional community engagement. It's really nearly impossible for me to imagine how we could have done more. This is a process that's been an engagement on steroids. It's been, over the past several years, the Master Planning Committee, the Land Use Committee, the Board of the Prospect Park Association, Prospect Park 2020, and the Prospect Park North Partnership, Towerside Partners, have met with the community on scores of occasions over coffee in our homes, at the famously well-attended Prospect Park of support meetings, in multiple meetings at the Turner Brothers Office Building, in the Textile Center, and in the last two years, we've met twice at Surly's on a Saturday morning, and one of those mornings it was 15 below. We had over 150 people there. This concept is strongly supported by this community. The Towerside Innovation District deserves and in fact demands the implementation of this bold vision. The Prospect Park Association understands that neighborhoods do not build cities. Neighborhoods and cities are built by developers. And it is our good fortune to have landowners and developers who share our vision and our ideals. If this high-intensity mix of uses, building types, open spaces, and people engaged in reinforcing activities has value to the city, if the purpose of the Innovation District is to be applied to this request, and if the community, and if the work of the community seeking this high level of development is respected and important, we believe now is the time to move forward. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. A couple of questions. Thank you for being here. And so I think typically, I think we would have a maybe not favorable perspective on a developer asking for this amount of significant policy change just for one site. So I think that the work that the community has done around planning this area is significant in how I'm thinking about this decision. So I wanted to ask you some questions about how this parcel fits into that context. You talked about it a bit, but one question I think a lot of us might have is, what's particular about this site that would make it the place to do a transitional district instead of the current land use classification? And another question related would be, are we to then expect that we would have a lot more developers coming in with similar applications while we're in the process of doing this bigger citywide plan update? And so I thought it would be helpful for you to offer your perspective as someone who's been involved in that community planning effort on those two questions.
Thank you. I'll try. We think this site and this request is really important because it's at the core of the district. It's at the Prospect Park Station. The entire district that we're talking about can be seen from the Prospect Park Light Rail Station. It runs to the base of the elevators. I believe that the vision has already attracted the development that we have. Green Fourth is happening. I think the developers have invested in that because they see it's real. We'd like to be able to extend that. I think we've been very, very lucky. We've had landowners willing to devote the time and the dollars to participate in a district system that the payoff is long-term. But getting this first piece right at the heart of the district that involves the blank site for development, involves the park, it involves the heart of the district system to grow it throughout the district, I think it's urgent that we get this. And we don't feel we can really wait for the normal process to play out here, but the opportunity is now, and we don't want to miss it. The second is, are others going to request this? They may. I think we maybe need to figure out really what it means to have an Innovation District, and how are we going to, what are the rules? And how do we, I think we'd love to be supporting the rules if we knew them. We were happy to get the designation Innovation District, hoping we could kind of figure it out along the way. When I describe this, I say that we're going to take living, working, learning, discovery, and sort of mush it all together. Not exactly a technical term for zoning. How do we do that? What are the building types? What are hybrid building types? How do we do that? So I think we've got a lot to work to do on the process, and we'd love to work with you on that and the planning and the staff. But this is why we're pressing so hard on this today. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Vince Ness. I'm the president of the Prospect Park Neighborhood Association. I live at 810 Thornton, and I'm here just to express on behalf of the Neighborhood Association our support for this plan and this change. We're usually seen as the neighborhood that says no. We're the Republic of Prospect Park, and we stand in the way of some things. We have a historic district, the largest in the state, because of the activism that we have in the neighborhood. So this is an interesting case where the neighborhood is really saying yes to this and really wants this to happen. As you've heard, there's a pile of reports. There's lots, been lots of effort and time spent, but the jobs that have been discussed over the last 15 years just haven't occurred. There's no wind in the sails over there. So at the moment, we have the right developer, the right landowner, the right plan, the right community partnership between us and PP 2020 and the Towerside Innovation District, and it is a moment we'd hate to have to lose over something as simple as a regulatory One piece I add sometimes is our neighborhood stretches from Oak Street at the University of Minnesota all the way to the southeast Como, through the middle of the railroad yards, all the way south to the River Gorge. Even our own board sometimes forgets how big and diverse Prospect Park is. We've been a lot of reform lately in Prospect Park to open the doors and get a lot more community voices. Our meetings are very well-attended. Our zoning and planning meeting has overflow seating. We are unlike some other neighborhood organizations where they get surprised by developers, or they haven't heard, or things happen to them. We are actively engaged and really are very blessed to have the kind of support from our developer that's unlike other groups. So on behalf of the 8,000 residents, the 400 members of our association, the 27 members of our Board of Directors, I urge you to support this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Monique McKenzie. I'm the director of campus and capital planning at the University of Minnesota, and I'm a resident in the city of Minneapolis. Thank you. I just wanted to speak today, not about your procedural challenge that you have in front of you, it's certainly a dense one, but I wanted to give you a little more information about the impacts. We are really the only impacted party for this very exciting move in Towerside Innovation, which is development of land that was traditionally seen as industrial. We're the only impacted landowner, not from a parcel perspective, but from a transitway service perspective. And that's really what I want to spend about three minutes respecting your time today. So I do want to say first off that we've been working extensively with this specific developer and of course, the Neighborhood Association on the core question we have in front of us, which is, and someone said it earlier, that the transitway used to be no man's land. Nothing happened over there, and now lots is happening over there. The university is certainly committed to working with the city and those adjacent landowners to define a plan for transitway crossings that meets those service requirements that we have as a campus, but also recognizing that things have changed and that demands that will emerge from development occurring on the north side of the transitway will cause us to act differently, and that's fully understood. This transitway was designed and operated in the late 1990s as a fixed guideway dedicated transit corridor. It's 2.3 miles in length. It links our Minneapolis and St. Paul campuses. The right-of-way that we are holding ranges from 60 to 100 feet in width. Generally speaking, that means we can accommodate two lanes of bus traffic and a shared cyclist and pedestrian path. What's interesting as an anecdote, in an exciting way, particularly in the segment that's a little darker on your image there, mysteriously leading up to the Surly site, our pedestrian and cyclist traffic on the transitway has become much heavier. And if we could find another place to put a second path so we didn't have to mix cyclists and pedestrians, we'd be doing that as soon as we could. The service levels on this transitway is really what I want to bring to mind for you as you consider how much you need to know about these land use changes and the impacts that will build to build out infrastructure. I also want to flag the issue of pedestrian and cyclist safety. Right now, the travel time on that transitway is about eight minutes between Como Avenue and St. Paul and 23rd Avenue in Minneapolis. That means the travel speed for our university buses is between 30 and 40 miles an hour, which is not an ideal condition for any transit vehicle in a developing or more developed urban environment. However, those speeds and those travel times are based on the idea that students do, in actual fact, transfer between classes on the East Bank and the St. Paul campus. They have 10 minutes to transfer between classes. I would say most students don't make every single class change in that timeframe. It would be exhausting, but I think we discovered the other day that we have about two-thirds of our students taking at least one class a week on the St. Paul campus. That's very true in the earlier years usually of their undergraduate experience, and they start to specialize later. What that means from a head time, or a, I'm sorry, a timeframe or headway perspective is we have buses traveling particularly in this sort of intensified area every five minutes, which means a bus in each direction every two and a half minutes. So in terms of how we think about crossings, high speed, in my opinion, in terms of an urban condition, transit, increasing bike and ped traffic, especially this is the prime bike route to St. Paul, make for some conditions that we all want to be very cognizant about as development goes forward. So really, today I just wanted to highlight a few specific impacts. They are not germane to your question. They do, they are considerations under the staff report, item number six. The bottom of that page seven in the staff report notes that regardless of the decision you make about land use, these needs have to be addressed. That part of the city will change. It's essentially the last part of the city without adequate infrastructure to support any kind of land use. So these are all things that we'll all have to wrangle with. The cost will be considerable. Either things in the ground today can't support, or things just don't exist. Couple of things, though, to think about, trying to get the scale a little more focused on how individuals who hold land today can advance. There are issues right in front of us at Malcolm in the transitway. We need a traffic signal. We have about one to two near misses a week between our transit drivers and somebody, either in a vehicle, or on a bike, or on foot, maybe coming from Surly, just saying, trying to cross. And there's a curve, so the transit drivers need to be very alert and anticipate. We've done some things, taken landscape out, tried to, just sightlines. It's made things better, but everyone at the university is concerned about a bad situation. Second point, again, this is not germane to your business, but really important for the landowners in particular. The public right-of-way on Malcolm Avenue is consistently used by those landowners in the yard north, so you saw the aerial image with the container yard. Their yard, I think, is insufficient probably for their operations, so what happens is truck stacking Malcolm Avenue, which means the west side of Malcolm Avenue can't get the access it needs to a public street. So active management, your city ordinance says there shall be no private use of the right-of-way for stacking, for queuing, for maneuvering. That could alleviate some of the challenges. The university has planned for a future crossing at 27th Avenue in the transitway. That's consistent with the Grand Rounds plan, which is beloved and ambitious, but it's certainly a plan that the university has recorded in its own documents. You've all referenced the need for a local street north of the transitway. That's just the cost of that land changing, no matter how it changes. But it will be significant. The only way to get across the transitway today without conflicts from the transitway service provider's point of view is to get to Malcolm, to get to a future 27th crossing, or to get to 25th. The last two points I just want to mention here are really about that pedestrian movement. The excitement and the vision that's cast by Towerside Innovation is about a new way to build a city. I mean, it's not new for all the proponents, but it's new in our generation, which is not car-focused. You know, it's pedestrian travel or it's cyclists. How we can ensure until there isn't a transit service in that corridor, that those crossings are safely made, that they're intuitive, they're attractive, is really essential, especially with exciting new use prospects like a food hall. And then the last point, which again is about permitting for the future, but the university will continue to be interested in how properties that are adjacent to the transitway, what design is specified for the edge that fronts the transitway, because we don't want at-will crossings, predominantly really for that safety issue. So that's a little too much detail. Typically heard, I would expect, at a permitting question, which is not what's in front of you, but I thank you for your time today.
Thank you. All right. Who would like to speak next? Yes, please state your name and address.
Chair Brown, commissioners, I'm Tom Fisher. I'm the director of the Minnesota Design Center at the University of Minnesota. My address is 89 Church Street, Southeast. I'm here as a person, in some ways, representing the university on the Towerside planning that's gone on for several years. I got involved in this effort back several years ago when my research colleagues kept talking about the fact that UEL, the research incubator that the university has in this area, did not have a place for startup companies to go after they outgrew that initial incubator space, and that in fact, companies were leaving the city and unfortunately, in many cases, leaving the state and going to the coasts. And so I felt that we needed, as a community, to figure out a way to create step-up space for startup companies utilizing the research intellectual property that we were developing. We are, as others have said, we're one of the largest, none of the largest research universities, but we're usually in the top 10 of all research universities in the country in terms of the amount of research we do. We're also one of the only research universities without an accompanying research park adjacent to it. And so we, as a region, have put all of our R&amp;D-intensive companies out of the edges. We don't have anything close to the university. So for So from the academic side, we see this area as absolutely crucial for us to fully leverage the research coming out of the university to develop the new kinds of jobs that are suited for a twenty-first century economy. As we talked to colleagues who were leaving UEL, the kinds of space they wanted wasn't simply industrial space. They kept talking about the need to have space where you could make your spaces where you perhaps could be living close to the places you were making. And we followed what other cities have been doing with new kinds of hybrid zoning like residential industrial zones and what have you to accommodate this twenty-first century notion of production that might be more about three D printing and C and C fabrication than it is in a twentieth century notion of what a factory is. The other thing about this is we also felt and have found with some of our research that we tend to think of jobs as separate from residential. Over fifty percent of all small businesses are done out of people's homes. And so residential areas are actually job-producing areas as well. And in fact, we see this increasing in the new economy rather than decreasing. And so the idea of a more flexible zoning category for this area, we see as an opportunity for us to also put in place the kinds of live-work environments that other cities are in fact doing, and we're a bit behind on this. And then finally, I'll just make a point. One of the other things that my center is involved in with the university's involvement and many others is this is an area that is scheduled if we get accepted by the Bureau of International Exhibitions for the Expo twenty twenty-three World's Exposition, which we will hear about in November. And so it is currently anticipated to be north of the transitway, which would be a World's Exposition attracting millions of people in twenty twenty-three. And so again, as we think about the opportunities north of the transitway, I just encourage you all to be thinking about all of that other kind of activity, so.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
And is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, please state your name and address.
I think I'm batting cleanup. My name is John Carey. I live at one-six-nine Malcolm Avenue Southeast in Minneapolis. I am currently a board member of PPA, and I'm also on the Land Use Committee, which does project review and zoning. I am Chair of PP twenty twenty, but in my past, I was the Prospect Park, one of Prospect Park's members on the Semi Land Use and Planning Committee back in the late eighties and into the nineties. There are three points that I want to make. One relates to the need for waiting for the twenty forty comp plan. The next is what is the appropriate zoning for this nine-acre area? And then the third is what I would say is respect for the community engagement and planning process that we've gone through. In terms of the twenty forty update, in my professional life, I was a planner for the Metropolitan Council. I specialized in growth management, land use and transportation. I was a part of the core team nineteen seventy-three, probably before most of you were born, that led to the first development framework, that led to the Planning Metropolitan Land Planning Act, that is the origin of regional plans, local comprehensive plans, and that communication back and forth. And the major pieces that we did at that time was really try to look at growth at the edges, getting suburban growth under some sort of managed control. In the mid nineteen nineties, I led a staff group that looked at making legislative changes to the Planning Act, and two of those pieces I think are particularly relevant. One of them was the update process, which was to put it on an annual or a ten-year cycle. Previously, there was no requirement for, once a plan had been approved by the council, that communities needed to update it, except in response to changes in one of the major regional systems. The other part led to that the vision and plan should lead zoning. Previously, a number of communities had zoning preempting planning when it came to what was in control. The law was changed then so that the zoning had to reflect the vision for the community and the plan for the community. In light of that, several things I'd like to say. One in terms of the update. Updates are normal under the land planning process, and they can be done in response to demographic changes, economic changes, and also in infrastructure. And the plan for this area, we have, as a neighborhood, come up with a development plan, vision, concept for the station area, and that will be, I assume, incorporated into the twenty forty plan, but it really hasn't been officially a part of it. So what we're really saying is that this could be a logical, normal part of the Land Planning Act process for updating the last plan and doesn't have to wait until you go through this next process. The next part is that when we were doing the semi-plan, many of us were looking at industrial jobs as we would remember what they were twenty-five and thirty years ago. That is no longer the case. What we see is that companies who are really trying to employ millennials are looking at vertical rather than horizontal buildings. They want mixed use rather than single use, and they're looking for multiple types of opportunities in their employment area. So what we're looking at is a plan that would be really truly mixed use and that would be attractive to these types of developments. The next part is that in response to major regional infrastructure, the Planning Act really says that you can update your plan or should if there's new infrastructure. But Prospect Park Station and the Green Line has been a major boon to the types of redevelopment along the whole avenue, but particularly in Prospect Park. A question that Commissioner Bender raised. What is this area north? Well, right now, it looks like, if we view it as a circle, the southern half, we've done a lot of housing. We have New Green Forest as a greenway going through it. We have a park that is being planned. We have a district stormwater system. We have a grocery store coming, and we have a variety of housing types. We have higher-cost luxury apartments. We have market-rate apartments. We have affordable apartments. We're looking at getting significant subsidy for family workforce housing by Aon, and we have senior housing coming in, which would be normal senior housing, assisted living and memory care. We will have the type of housing that the community said that they wanted, a variety of incomes and a variety of tenures. What we're looking at is how do we take the next half, which is this area north that is the wall and Prospect Park properties, and integrate it in? We think moving the zoning to this transitional zoning industrial classification would allow it to be better integrated to what we're doing on the south side. And it really is in keeping with the jobs focus that we had in the semi. And we tried to work with developers and others to get industrial jobs there, and as Mr. Wall said, it just didn't work very well. What we need to do is to build on what infrastructure we have, the light rail system and the energy that's in the market right now, and take advantage of that. And I think the smallest change is worthwhile. So in conclusion, I would say that we don't need to wait. The zoning should be this transitional industrial, and the community has had a lot of input into this and is very excited about the type of community that we're creating north of University Avenue and hopefully now north of the transitway. Thank you.
Thank you. And is there anyone else? Yes, please state your name and address.
I'm Clay Lambert. I own the best gas station in the neighborhood that you forgot, Mr. I'm going to make this real brief. I've been on the ground there for thirteen years, and I've watched all this development come up. I've seen all the reports and all the meetings and stuff like that. And I think it's important, but it just keeps to be repeating itself. And what I see on the ground there, because everyone comes in the gas station, rich, poor, black, white, male, female, everybody comes, and you hear everything. And really what we need in the neighborhood is more bodies. We need more customers. We need more neighbors. We need more people to pay tax base and jobs and such, and bicyclists and car people and all that kind of stuff. So what I'm hearing, I listened here the whole time, and I think you guys are a little concerned to make a preemptive move, which I believe quite frankly, you're going to make anyways in a few months or a year or something like that. It's going to be, it's going to be hands down what you're going to do anyways. So I don't think this is a knee-jerk or a defensive move or anything like that. I think it's something that you're going to end up doing anyways. So from my point of view on the ground, also, all this development, I've seen a lot less crime. Everyone feels a lot safer. The tension is way down in the neighborhood. The construction guys are great, and everyone's kind of really getting along. So that's my two cents. Thanks, everybody, for your time.
All right. Thank you. And is there anyone else who would like to speak? See, Noah and I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, are there any further questions or would someone like to start things off with a motion? Commissioner Slack.
Yeah, I have a question for staff. Just sitting here wondering and thinking, you know, about the future of land use on this site. How much land do we actually have in our industrial employment districts citywide? And then, and this may be a really difficult question to answer, but say, over the last five years, how much of that has actively been redeveloped or has been developed for an industrial use? I'm just wondering holistically throughout the city, you know, what's available, what's actually been developed, and what impact or percentage, you know, does nine acres mean to that overall area?
Commissioner Slack, on the first question, it's the total number of acres in industrial employment districts. I don't have that in front of me. The number we put in the staff report was just that percentage of the total surface area of the city, which is seven percent. Obviously, it's a number we can get in terms of the total acreage, which I will try to find while the discussion continues after this. And the second question about what percentage has been or how much has been redeveloped within industrial employment?
Yeah, I guess for me, I'm just trying to get my head around how much, you know, land there is within this industrial employment district. How much is still available for development? Obviously, there's development on maybe five percent of it, say. So how much does that actually leave for future industrial uses? And say, over the last five years, just off the top of my head, how much is actively being redeveloped or how much inquiries have we gotten on what is available? Just to give a sense of what the big impact is for taking nine acres out of the equation.
Sure. I think Jack's going to have a good answer for it, but I want to.
I think it's in the report, fifty-four square miles.
Well, the city, Commissioner Reeland, the city as a whole is fifty-four square miles. So the land dedicated to industrial employment districts is a small percentage of that, seven percent of that.
Or four square miles in the report.
Oh, oh, thank you. The number is in the report. Thank you for citing my own work. Four square miles. I want to answer part of your question, Commissioner Slack, and then turn it over to Jack, who has more to provide. We do know that there's been a consistent trend in recent years, going back to the time that the industrial land use study was adopted, that we're losing, consistently we're losing building square footage devoted to industrial uses and land area devoted to industrial uses and zoning. That number has been a continuous drop for quite a long time. I don't have the specific numbers in front of me, but Jack Byers, Long Range Planning Manager, wanted to add something.
Thanks, Paul. Thanks, Commissioners. While I don't have exact numbers for you, there is, we're thinking about it. As Paul and Beth mentioned, we're studying it. We don't have all of the answers yet, but we are thinking about it. And so there is a proportional concern that we have. When you think about all of that land in industrial employment districts, the vast majority of it is in Shoreham Yards, Humboldt Yards, and the rail yards here. And while it's certainly possible that some of that land would be sold by the railroads, it's not likely to happen soon or quickly. And so if you take all of that existing land owned by those railroads and take that out of the mix, then you are really left with something much, much smaller. And the pressure that we get or the calls that we always get from our colleagues in CPED Economic Development is they're working with potential folks who want to move to the city, bring jobs to the city, and they can't find tracts of land large enough. And the land has been chopped up over the years, or I don't have to tell all of you that the use code tables in the zoning code have gotten quite industrial or quite, sorry, liberal so that you can have things like, and I can't name them off the top of my head, but you can have charter schools, you can have religious institutions, you can have doggy daycares and all sorts of things that aren't, and you can have truck parking, all kinds of things that aren't really about making things and giving people jobs. So what we're trying to understand in the study that we're doing is how much land is actually available of all of that land, how much land is actually available for folks who want to come in and do some kind of industrial development. And then on top of that, I think the other concern that we're really trying to think through is that none of this land is clean, so all of it needs resources. And that's a resource question that we're working on, not only for the city, but obviously with our institutional partners and with developers as well. So it's a long way of saying that there's very, of that land on the map that's in purple, very little of that is actually in play.
Commissioner Lukey.
I actually have a question for Carol Lansing. She's the project contact on this. So in understanding all the testimony and how compelling it has been, the concern and the thing that I keep coming back to is, can you explain to me how this won't set precedent? Because I think a concern that we have isn't, is looking at, we have a finite amount of industrial zone land for future land use. So whether or not it's in demand today or been sitting dormant for fifteen years, we have to look twenty, fifty years down the road, whether or not industrial is what it was or whether it means something different. Our concern is, is this going to open the floodgates? So every developer now has a precedent set saying, this land's not being used, we can't get anyone to build a factory on it, therefore, let's do mixed use or this, that or the other. Because I can certainly think of certain areas being more appealing for that, leaving other areas of the city that are already experiencing hardship to be stuck with kind of the dregs. So I'm just kind of wondering, how do we, from your perspective, how do you see this as setting or not setting precedent that would have an impact on that going forward?
Okay, sure. I think this is the most highly discretionary decision that has come before you. It is pure policy. And so, you know, all zoning is case by case, but if anything has less presidential force or requirement, it's policy decisions like comprehensive plan amendments. Also, this is a particular, this is a unique situation. It is an industrial area near a transit station, but also in an area where the community has been highly engaged in planning and development activities and supports this. Also, the Tower Side Innovation District is unique to this location. So there's one other industrial employment district near a transit station that's like in Hiawatha. And that area is actually developed and functioning industrial land, and that's, this is vacant. And while you hear that there are users who can't find large enough tracts of land, they haven't wanted to go here. I think there's, you know, a lot of, to date, and that's another unique factor, I think, is the need for the infrastructure, the need for the road connections. Because as Mr. Wall and Jeff Barnhart have said, they're not against, that they're going to keep looking for industrial office users, and they have a lot of land up keep looking for industrial office users, and they have a lot of land up there to put it on, but bridging the transitway and creating a destination location with the parks and the connections is what they need to catalyze that. So I think there's a lot of unique factors, and it's a highly, you know, you are not bound by having granted it to one that anybody can say, well, now you have to grant it to me.
Right. Commissioner Magrino, then Commissioner Bender.
I had a quick question for staff. So if we were to adopt the changes recommended by the applicant today, so it's gonna go to City Council for approval, and then to the Met Council, and then, does that then come back to us if they have any concerns or questions about it? I mean, I guess my question is, so if we were to adopt this, it's probably gonna take some amount of time, you know, maybe six months, something like that, for it to actually go into effect compared to timeline of just doing the comp plan and adopting it in, you know, maybe 2020? So, how long would it take to change it? If we approve the request?
Commissioner Magrino, yes, it would go to the City Council, the same route that, you know, any other request would take. It'll go to the zoning and planning committee and on the full City Council. If the City Council were to approve the application, then it would be staff's responsibility to put together the application that meets the Met Council's requirements and submit it to them. They would, the Met Council then would be on, according to our opinion from the city attorney, would be on the same 61-day, 6120-day clock as a development application. So then it would, it would come back within that, within that time period. So it takes some time, but it doesn't take as long as the larger comprehensive plan update is going to take.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Jack. I think your presentation had the differences between the two land use classifications in it, at the beginning.
I'm sorry?
Did your presentation have the differences between the two land use classifications in it, or like a use table at the beginning?
I don't think we had a slide on that, Commissioner Bender, but I can speak to it.
Yeah, that'd be helpful. I think so, I guess my bigger question is, it'd be helpful to know the differences between these two land use applications, and I was also reflecting here and would like your answer too. So if we did support the change in the land use classification, that's like step one of any sort of development proposal that would come forward. And so there would likely need to be rezonings and other changes. So for example, if the applicant brought forward, if any applicant brought forward a proposal for this site in the future, and it didn't have enough industrial use in it or something, it seems like maybe there's some leeway in terms of what the rezoning would be, but I'm not sure how the land use is lining up to what the underlying zoning is.
Commissioner Bender, I'll try to sort that out. So the existing future land use guidance, and we're talking about the parcel-specific future land use guidance, so there's the two layers that we were talking about before. One layer is the industrial employment district and the associated boundary, and then the other layer below that is the parcel-specific guidance. I think your question, Commissioner Bender, is about the parcel-specific guidance and the difference between industrial and transitional industrial. So in industrial, I'm just gonna read the definition from the comprehensive plan, includes areas suited for industrial development and limited supporting commercial uses generally found within industrial employment districts with a high level of policy protection and an emphasis on job retention and creation. Industrial uses have primacy over other uses. It's a great word, primacy. Transitional industrial, we have this in the report, don't we? Did we leave that? Oh, here it is, okay. On page five, if you're following along, under amendment request, the transitional industrial definition. Industrial areas located outside of industrial employment districts will be labeled transitional, since they may eventually evolve to other uses compatible with surrounding development. Although they may remain industrial for some time, they will not have the same level of policy protection as areas within industrial districts. So this definition, you know, if you're thinking about the word transitional, there's a couple ways you can think about it. You can think of it spatially, transitioning from one land use to another. You can think about it temporally, over time, changing from one use to another. This definition emphasizes the latter, the temporal change. And to your second question, so as Beth said at the very beginning of all this, that change introduces more flexibility in terms of what land uses would be supported by policy. You'll notice that this definition of transitional industrial doesn't name those land uses. It just says, "may evolve to other uses compatible with surrounding development." Okay? Traditionally, it's been the practice that the industrial, industrial living overlay district has been viewed as an appropriate zoning district for transitional industrial areas, because it allows that flexibility. All of the underlying industrial rights remain from I-1, I-2, or I-3, whatever the district is, in this case, it's I-2, with the addition of allowing housing, and the addition of allowing some additional commercial uses that aren't otherwise allowed in industrial districts, but only in existing buildings. Okay? So you can't build like a brand-new grocery store, but you could put, say, a retail use into an existing building. And a really important point about this is that that just allows all of those things, and doesn't dictate in any way, shape, or form what the percentage of any particular use can be within a particular property or district. Okay? So they're just all allowed. If you can fit them, you can do them.
Maybe a follow-up then. We've had this project, this conceptual project described to us, but we don't have a land use application for a specific project in front of us. But so, from what I understand, it sounds like we would be then, if this kind of project came forward, looking at a rezoning from industrial to a commercial land use classification or something to allow for the project that's being described? Is that kind of where this would be heading in the future?
Yeah, I mean, Commissioner Bender, I hesitate to speculate exactly what applications might come before you from the property owner, you know, after this, but, you know, there's reference to housing in the application. Certainly, that would require a rezoning to either the industrial living overlay district or some other district. There's reference to a grocery store, which would require a rezoning. And so there's a number of different applications that would, that would be required to achieve what's laid out in the development concept.
So I guess just a final comment then is, I mean, it's a little unusual, again, to have kind of this very specific concept in our minds as we're thinking this through, but I'm reminding myself that this is really a policy decision about whether or not we want to consider allowing for uses that are in the transitional industrial classification, rather than in the purely industrial classification, but that doesn't mean we would have to. So, like, this decision, a rezoning is a legislative decision, and so if a project came forward that, again, didn't seem to meet the goals, even in the amended comp plan, for example, didn't have enough jobs or other reasons, that wouldn't have to be approved. So that's just a statement you can comment or clarify if you want.
Commissioner Bender, I'll just, you know, confirm that, that a rezoning, of course, is a legislative decision, just like this.
Commissioner Kronzer.
Really cool question. You know, one of my concerns is about additional public pressure, pressure on the public dollar to build additional infrastructure that doesn't exist here. Has there been any discussion about how additional infrastructure, or streets, sewers, water mains, how that would be paid for with this proposal?
Commissioner Kronzer, I think that it would be best, Commissioner Bender made the appropriate point just now, that, you know, really what's before you is this policy decision as it relates to the comprehensive plan, and it's less about the specific proposal that is laid out in concept in the, in the application. I believe there is some reference in the application to, to that question about paying for the, for the infrastructure. I'd encourage you to separate that, frankly, from the question that's before you, and, but, you know, it may be a question for the applicant in terms of how they plan to pay for it.
All right. Paul, I have a question, and again, this may be a somewhat tangential one. Obviously, there are some older structures on the site. Is there any indication of the significance of any historic resources, or what do you know about those? Obviously, we have a process for, if someone were to come in and propose demolishing everything and building a new building, but what information does the city currently have?
So President Brown, I want to make a couple things clear about that. One is, so the larger property that the applicant owns includes, you know, what's referred to as the United Crusher's Elevator, that is not within the area subject to this amendment. I just want to make sure, this amendment request, I want to make sure that's clear. So, somebody correct me if I'm wrong on staff, but I believe the only structure that's actually within the area being proposed for the amendment is the Harris Machinery Building, and I believe that actually did receive a demolition permit at one point. Is that correct, Jack? Yeah. At the applicant's request, yeah. So it went through what it needed to go through in terms of considerations for historic.
I might ask the applicant, it looks like they maybe have a response to that as well.
Yeah, I'll just clarify that. It's a remodeling permit, because we're trying to turn that one structure that has historical significance into the food hall. So we're trying to preserve that at all costs.
Okay, okay. All right. Are there any further questions, or would someone like to start us off with a motion? Commissioner Magrino.
So I will start us off, I think, for conversation purposes. I would like to make a motion to approve the application for the comprehensive plan amendment, and I'll explain a little bit about that in a second.
All right, is there a second? We have a motion to approve, we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Magrino.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very grateful for the very thorough staff report and to the thorough presentation from the applicant here. Obviously, a lot of work and thought went into both of them. I did go walk around the site on Friday as well. You know, in this case, this does seem like a policy decision, and if the Met Council has a rule or a law that we're able to accept amendments to the comprehensive plan up until, it sounds like June, I don't see a problem with doing that in this case. I do understand, sort of in principle, wanting to wait until the comprehensive plan is finished and having those conversations about industrial employment in the city generally, but it does appear that in this specific location, there has been a lot of thought that's been put into this, and the site has changed a great deal since we adopted the comprehensive plan, and even since the stationary plan. It does appear that there's policy support for it as well. The applicant went through that in the resolution from 2015, encouraging us to think of, you know, innovative and creative ways to use land like this in the city. And I do think that this is one of those cases. It also sounds like the applicant has made a pretty extensive good-faith effort to find other uses for this property that would fit with the industrial employment category. Those are all listed in their, their application, and they haven't had any luck. And so I think that this is something good for us to try.
All right, is there any further discussion? Commissioner Rockwell.
Thank you, Chair Brown. Just, just to add on a little bit to Commissioner Magrino's comments, you know, hearing the testimony tonight, and being relatively familiar with the, the general Prospect North Tower Side area through my previous job and my current job, as supporters of the vision, you know, I think we are seeing, there's a little bit of a disconnect in what, to me, in what the vision that's been stated by the community, and what, and what we're looking at today, and what we've already seen in other land use applications, which is that we, we have heard testimony tonight about this entire area being mushed together zoning, to use one of the public testimony words. And, and, you know, I think we're seeing, on the south side of the transitway, we're seeing almost all a residential, a mixed residential, and on the north side of the transitway, we're, we're pushing for exclusively industrial. And, you know, I think that we, that it would behoove the city, and I know we have Robin Garwood from Cam Gordon's office here, and Councilmember/Commissioner Lisa Bender, behoove the city to think about how we could consider a policy framework that does look at mushing it together in the entire area. I, you know, I understand the timing question, but that feels dangerous to me. We just, you know, it's not at all the same, but it makes me think of Merrick Garland. I think that this, we have a tool that is here for a reason, and if we don't think that this kind of tool should be used, then we should get rid of the tool. But this seems like it fits precisely, this application seems like it fits precisely within what that tool is designed to do, and I think there has been a lot of change in this area, and, and there has been a lot of work from the community, and I know that the, that various delegations from the city have been involved in this planning process over the last many years as well. So I just wanted to reflect on a couple of those pieces, since I was the second to the motion there, but I think this doesn't feel like, like, the timing is off, and it does feel like this is an area where there's, there's a lot going on, where this, this kind of idea fits with the vision, and I take particular note of Commissioner Bender's point that we have an underlying zoning, and we have industrial guidance that will remain in the comprehensive plan, and I would expect that we would, you know, particularly with, with CPED staffs, take on this, that we would really push for something extraordinary and something that does involve jobs and, and industry, and we have the tools to do that.
All right. And I might just clarify with staff, obviously, with this type of application, we have a little bit more latitude than some of the other types of applications we see. I just want to make sure, are the types of statements, and I can summarize at the end, but are the types of statements you are hearing acceptable as backup for, provided this motion carries?
President Brown, as has been stated a few times, this is indeed a legislative and a policy decision. I think it's important to note, regardless of how you come down on this, that the seven factors for consideration that are included in the application and in the staff report are, those are not in ordinance or in the comprehensive plan itself, they are simply factors for consideration.
Right, thank you. Commissioner Kronzer.
And just to add one, one more detail, and really what pushes my thoughts over the edge on this, is this nine acres is fully within the quarter-mile radius of the light rail station. I mean, that's a, the proximity is almost shockingly close to the light rail station here.
All right, is there any further discussion? I can, I can summarize very quickly, and I think commissioners, three commissioners who spoke all raised some good points, and certainly, I believe that staff made a very compelling case for not changing the designation for this area. Obviously, city policy, including all of the small area plans for this area, the employment in industrial district study from 10 or so years ago, really designate that transit way as, as kind of a hard and fast boundary. So there certainly is a lot of policy support for, for keeping that designation the way it is. I, I think though, you know, like the commissioner said, that this, some of those studies are several years old, and this area has certainly changed, and I think one of the most significant changes is the opening of the Prospect Park LRT station, and in that vicinity, we've seen very significant development interest in that area transform very rapidly. In fact, I think even more development interest than many of us expected. And as Commissioner Kronzer pointed out, you know, this, this entire site, nine-acre site, is within a pretty easy walking distance, particularly if additional infrastructure is constructed on that station, and our comprehensive plan does have a policy of promoting higher-density development in, in close proximity to transit stations. And certainly, you know, if someone, as the applicant said, used this site to simply park trailers outside, that's, that's not a very intense or very good use of land in that type of location. I'm also kind of convinced by the historic preservation argument. I realize that there are uses of this property that are allowed, and even some of those that the applicant is proposing that, you know, would be allowed under the current comprehensive plan designation, under the current zoning, and some opportunity for that structure to be preserved. I think, though, providing some additional flexibility as far as what is allowed there... though, providing some additional flexibility as far as what is allowed there, maybe helps, helps that, helps that along. I also believe that, you know, as the applicant pointed out, there's not a lot of public street infrastructure in this location. And, you know, it doesn't, I can't necessarily speak for the city, but it doesn't seem like there's a lot of interest in the city facilitating construction of new streets in this area. And if more intense development is to occur, I think it's probably the case that some other types of uses might need to be allowed to, to support that and make that more feasible. So is there any further discussion? If there is none, we have a motion and a second to approve the comprehensive plan amendment. And clerk, please call the roll.
Reeland?
Aye.
Sweets?
No.
Slack?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Lukey here?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
So that's seven to one.
All right. And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item six. This, of course, will go to the city council as well. And that is the last item we have for today, so our meeting is adjourned.